Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our regular meeting. I want to welcome our invocation by Mr. Our pastor Buddy Hanson. Sorry, there's a lot going on this morning. With Barnwell Baptist Church. And then I'm gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand with me while we do the invocation.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Glad to be here today. Good morning, everyone. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we're so grateful that we're able to do this today. We give you praise for who you are, but also for the freedom that you've given us. And Lord, we thank you, Lord. I pray for this commission. I thank for these commissioners, Lord. You raise up leaders. Your word says that. And so, Father, we pray for them. As, Lord, help them as they have this entrustment, this stewardship. Lord, give them wisdom today. Father, I pray, as we all need wisdom, and we all need to come to you daily for that. Lord, your word says the fear of the Lord is the beginning of knowledge. And so, we fear you, Father, and we reverence you today. We're asking you, Lord, for your presence here in these proceedings. We pray for your peace that passes all understanding. And Lord, we pray, Father, that everything would be done well and in good order, and that, Father God, at the end of it all, that, Lord, you'd be praised. And so, again, thank you for what we get to do today, and what a privilege it is. And we thank you most of all for your son, the Lord Jesus Christ, our Savior and King. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Before I do the Pledge of Allegiance, Pastor Buddy Hanson is with Barnwell Baptist Church. He's our pastor, so I just wanted to make sure I didn't mess up anything with your name, Pastor. So, thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. You don't have to stay if you don't want to, but you're more than welcome to stay. All right. First thing is on our agenda is adoption of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the November the 5th, 2024 regular meeting of minutes.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Committee reports. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I made the motion that we approve the payment of the bills and distribution of taxes, which are listed in the Ballin County Accounts payable payments.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Hang on, Mr. Chairman. I mean, Mr. Chairman, we got, he's got to read out B A two.
Okay.
Notification interim payments approved by Clerk Treasurer as allowed under Policy 8.1. There's no action taken. We don't have to do anything.
Commissioner Gruber, I also wanted to add in before we adopted our consent agenda, introduction of a resolution that we've drawn up about employee leave. And this was, it's in regard an exercise of the authority provided in this section 118 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, and without limitation to close certain public buildings on lease or under the control of the Ballin County Commission on Wednesday, November the 27th. And I think that probably needs to be said at noon, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know where Deeder is. Is that, you meant at noon?
Yeah, it said it's beginning in noon here.
And then, okay, and then also on Monday, December 23rd, just to give the employees some extra, an extra half a day and a day off during the holiday season to spend with their families. And I just wanted to insert that in as this resolution 2025-45 is part of the consent agenda.
All right. Do we, we don't have to do an emotion or anything, do we? Since we added it to the consent already?
I guess that's kind of part of it, but don't also forget about the Addenda G A one, G A two that we agreed to also, yes. We need to make notation for minutes. That's been moved up to consent.
Also, before we adopt the consent agenda, Mr. Gruber, is that we are also inserting item G A one and G A two from the Addenda over to consent agenda as we discussed previously in our work session. And I second your motion.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? The only thing that I want to say, Commissioner, is that Commissioner Wall, thank you for doing that for the county employees, I think, and the commission approving this. So, I just want to say thank you all. Got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we got the consent. We're on the presentations. No presentations at this time. We got public hearing. Before we get started with the public hearing on these zoning cases that we have, if you're here to speak on a case as an individual, you have three minutes. If you hear speaking by a group, you have five minutes. But if you hear speaking on behalf of a group, please explain the group to me. Is it a real estate company? Is it something, some? Just explain when you get, because we're taking, people are taking advantage of the five minutes, so we want to clarify this. So, but anyway, thank you. All right.
And just for everybody's knowledge, Mr. Chairman, just let them know, I think a lot of people are here, especially for the first three that we're moving to the end of the public hearing.
ES one, case number, the Minkston property rezoning, the Childers property rezoning, and the PRD, we're going to move that to the end. That's going to be a little bit, a little bit time consuming. So, we want to go with the other ones first. So, ES four, case number Z 24-37, the Kiefer property rezoning. Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry. All right, so this is Z 24-37, the Kiefer property, and they are requesting to rezone from RA to RSF one for a single family use. Here is the location of the property. It is north of county, west of County Road 91, north of Highway 98, and Planning District 22. And it's about 11 acres. Here are the locator and site maps showing the adjacent zonings and the uses. As you can see, it's surrounded by RA zonings and B four zoning, and then agricultural and residential uses. When it comes to the rezoning factors, this supported most of the factors, except for one being questionable. And then the Planning Commission also recommended approval. But if y'all have any questions, I'm here to answer.
I don't have any questions. Commissioner?
No questions. Is anyone signed up?
I'm gonna close it.
You open the public.
All right, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. I've got on ES four, I have four people to speak. Mr. Tracy Gamble, you're first. You got three minutes. Unless you're speaking on behalf of a group, just. All right. Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen. I am supportive of this as an individual because it conforms to the master plan. The intersection of Highway 98 and County Road 91 is considered a rural crossroads center. Density increase from RA to RSF one is compatible with the surrounding areas and the master plan. Contrary to popular belief, I am not against growth. This parcel is directly across from my home. I support reasonable growth. I support the master plan, and I support the approval of this matter. And this is my front yard, which is a horse pasture, and beyond that is County Road 91 facing west. And beyond that is the 12-acre parcel that has previously been included in the sod farm just past that. So, I just wanted to make clear that, you know, I'm not always against everything. And that, there is one caveat I just want to mention, that there is significant flooding on this parcel during heavy rains because the elevation declines heading actually west. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ms. Gamble.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. All right, next is Mr. David Williams. David Williams?
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I would like to speak in support of this approval for zoning. It is very compatible with the area, very respectable to the other properties in that area, and I have full support to it, and thank you to the applicant developer who's respecting our community.
Thank you. Mr. David, real quick, did you want to speak on ES seven when it comes up?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you. Ms. Catherine? L G? Have I pronounced that right?
I wanted to speak about the subdivisions, not this.
Yeah, we're not here for the subdivision. We're here for the rezoning case.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Later in the day, yeah.
Do you want to speak later when it comes on something else after the end of the meeting, when it says public comments?
Yes, please.
All right. Just remind me in case I forget you.
All those that you're reading from for this case?
Is all these for the ones, let's see, this one, Kathy Barnett? Did you want to speak on this case?
Yes, sir. Kathy Barnett, the agent for the case. It's rare that we get so much public support for a project, so this one seems pretty easy. They made the job very simple for us, so I don't have to give you all the reasons why. It's a good call. So, thank you very much, and we appreciate the community's support as well.
All right, thank you.
If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them as well.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that's in the audience that didn't sign up that wants to speak on this case? All right, hearing none. I closed the public hearing on this case. Commissioners?
Make a motion. We approve case Z 24/37, Kiefer property rezoning.
I'll second the motion.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? A hearing none, then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Next case is the Burton Buckley property rezoning.
Duke's.
No, I'm sorry.
Duke's.
Yeah. Duke's property rezoning. ES five.
All right, so this is Z V A 2438, the Duke's property, and they are requesting to rezone from B two to B three. The property is located in Planning District 15. It's currently being used as construction business, HVAC generators, and they're just requesting to rezone to allow more types of businesses like that to further rent in the future. The adjacent zonings are RA, RSFE, B three, and B one with commercial, agricultural, and vacant uses. And it does, it is supported by all the factors that we have. So, therefore, both us and the Planning Commission have recommended approval of this case.
I don't have any questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
All right, no question. Thank you. I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Anybody to speak on ES five case? I don't think I have anybody signed up, so is anybody in the audience that didn't sign up that wants to speak on this case? All right. Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve case number Z 24-38, Duke's property rezoning. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The next case is, I guess it's yours then. You might as well say a thank you.
Me again.
Z 24-39.
All right, so like you stated, this is Z 2439, the Buckley property, and they are requesting to rezone from RA to RSF one. It's located in Planning District 37. And it's about, it's located south of Gayford Road exit in Liberty Lane. It's about 7.3 acres, but the applicant would like to rezone it for residential use. Here is the subject property. It's surrounded by many different zonings, RSF two, RTF for an RA, but all the adjacent uses are residential.
Hang on just one second. Y'all, there's a lot of people in here. We're going through a case right now, and we can't hear what our staff has recommended because of all the chatter in the audience. So, if y'all would just please have respect for us up here, as we're having respect for y'all in here. A lot of people, so once you start talking and having conversations, it gets kind of loud, and I just missed the three things that she said, so I appreciate that. Thank you all.
Sir? All right, so when it comes to the factors, all but one were supportive of this being rezoned to the residential single family, and both staff and the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the rezoning.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody for staff?
Nope.
Any questions? Open up the public hearing. Anybody here to speak on the Buckley property? Anybody that wants to speak? Anybody that didn't sign up that wants to speak? All right. Hearing none. Close the public hearing.
Make a motion. We approve case Z 24/39, Buckley property rezoning.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Oh, excuse me. Sorry. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. The Hamm Enterprises. Is that correct, Ms. R?
That's correct.
That is ES seven.
This is case Z 2440, Hamm Enterprises property. The request is to rezone from RA to RSF three for single family use. Here's the location of the property within the county. The subject property is located at the, at east of County Route 95 and west of Richwood Drive. It's located in Planning District 33. The total acreage is 22.87 acres, and the current use of the property is vacant, and the applicant would like to rezone for residential use. Here's the locator map and the site map. The property is surrounded by RA, which is rural agricultural zoning to the north, south, east, and west, and we also see some RSF three zoning to the east. The adjacent land uses include agriculture, residential, and vacant to the west. Here are the property images. Here are the factors that staff reviews with any rezone request. As you can see, about half or a little more than half of the factors have been met. There are a couple of questionable factors and one factor that has not been. There are a couple of questionable factors and one factor that has not been met. Staff's recommendation is approval of this request. The Planning Commission voted to recommend denial, eight to one, based on flooding, traffic, safety, and incompatibility with the master plan. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any. Oh, no questions? I'm sorry. I had something. All right, open up the public hearing. We've got a lot on ES7. If I butcher your name, I apologize in advance. Last name, R.A.V.A.N., Raven? Am I pronouncing that right? Jeannie, Ms. Jeannie Raven.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Raven. I live on County Road 99, right past this tip of where this property. I spoke at the meeting last time when this was denied. We want to keep this area country. Sorry, there's no infrastructure around here. It doesn't meet with the master plan of Baldwin County. It's surrounded by peach tree orchards and trees and other stuff like that. Farms go to the west and everything. The tip of that property hits a swamp. That swamp happens to run into a creek, which used to be a tiny creek, that runs into my property. The 23 acres is currently a filter for all the water that is in that area. It actually stops right there, comes to a point, comes right down there, comes right down a creek, comes right to my property and my neighbor's property. We have like 20-something acres apiece at this area. It has widened that creek. It is right now actually hollowing out that road of 99, which I called the road crew about it again because they built that thing twice now, and it's still having a major problem with water just from the houses that they built there in the last, oh, four years since 2020. They've put in at Arbor Ridge 6, at Pickens Subdivision 12, and these are allowed subdivisions because they already have the lots sitting there. Four of them on Route 12. Albert Hollow has four and two other subdivisions there. The more water that's going to come down, which it does drain, right in that direction on the, that would be the west, southwest section of that point of this property that you're trying to rezon. I'm a member of the Western Perdido Bay Water Set Association Keepers. We're the ones that put the newspaper things in there all the time about trying to keep this bay clean. This bay has been slowly becoming better and better. With this water running directly into my creek, which used to be four feet at the front when I bought this property, it's now 20 to 30 feet right up past that bridge and coming down to my end that goes into the, into the bay. I now own nine tenths of water because it's eaten up so much land right there. That's the county reassessing my land, looking at it, not me, the county. Baldwin Sewer also has a problem right here out of Spanish Cove. When that runs over, it smells. It has a septic problem down there. We had a big rain two months ago. They solved it by bringing in a big tanker truck, parked it in the middle of the road, side of the road, and sucked off any excess water. AIDM has already been involved with this situation concerning the E. coli tests that have been done right there below that septic area. You're going to run another 60-something or 80-something houses into that. I know it's not the subdivision thing right now, but I'm just saying, where does all that sewer go? The traffic on 99, which is crumbling and part of it, you can see it right there at my bridge, what's going on, has a problem. The way it's slanted, the way the waters run off of it, it has a lot of problems on that road. The dips and the curries with it. So that's about all I got to say about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Elizabeth Sullivan?
That was brilliant what she just said. So I've lived in Spanish Cove for almost 21 years. The increase in traffic has been phenomenal, phenomenal. Our roads are not maintained by the county, as you all know, and they're not really being well-maintained as they are, so it's just, we don't need any more development. When I, also when we moved here, I was told that that property was going to be used for a playground and a secondary pool to keep the amenities on the other place less crowded. And also, the population already kind of exceeds the ability of the voluntary board, who are very generous with their time, but it's, it's just too huge job. There are just too many houses there right now. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tracy Gamble, do you want to come on and speak with this one?
I am representing quite a number of people as a community advocate, and we've had three town halls and have well over 300 signatures from Planning District 23 as well as 33.
Okay.
Tracy, we can't hear you, baby.
Okay, so I have five minutes.
You've got five minutes, just a minute.
Thank you. So factors for rezoning, I'm going to strictly stick to the facts. So the current master plan, Planning Districts 23 and 33 both fall under these. Since 2002 and 2003, Baldwin, our Vision Future Land Use Guide and map surveyed 92% said protect the rural areas of the county. Number one, factor compatibility. 87% rural agriculture surrounding northwest and south adjacent properties for more than a mile would be compatible. 13% of RSF3 and RSF4 surrounding east adjacent properties for half a mile or less is not compatible. Density from RA to RSF3 is three leaps forward. Nonconformity with the master plan, incompatibility with surrounding properties. Factor two, have land uses or conditions changed since the zoning was established in 2003? No. That might be actually 2002. That was first before the other planning district. Does the proposed zoning better conform to the master plan? No. The master plan clearly shows this property in a moderate zoning area, RSF1 and RSF2. You can see on the legend and this map of the location, there is no orange color, which would be mid-density development, which is RSF3 and 4. Moderate is yellow, and that is RSF1 and RSF2. Will the proposed change conflict with existing or planned public improvements? We don't know. Will the proposed change adversely affect traffic patterns or congestion? Yes. Additional 60 homes will add a minimum of 60 vehicles to the traffic on Ridgewood Drive, which is already a three-and-a-half-minute drive at normal speed from the entrance at County Road 99. Is the proposed amendment consistent with the development patterns in the area? No. There has been no development pattern in the area since 50 years. Is the proposed amendment a logical expansion of adjacent zoning districts? No. It is not logical to base this decision on the 13% of adjacent zoning District 23 rather than 87% of the adjacent zoning District 33, which is where the subject property is located. Is the timing of the request appropriate given the development trends in the area? No. No development has taken place for 50 years for this particular subject property. Will the proposed change adversely impact the environmental conditions of the vicinity? Yes. Changing the current landscape from timberland to development, where there are wetlands and significant watershed drainage, potential downstream flooding onto existing properties leading to Perdido Bay, and existing sewage plant problems, as evidenced by AIDM involvement, leading to pollution of Perdido Bay, will adversely impact the environmental conditions of the vicinity. Will the proposed change adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the county and the vicinity? Simply yes. Other matters which may be appropriate. Time for emergency vehicles to reach this property from County Road 99 is significant. Access from County Road 91 will be opposed by two or more adjacent property owners to the west. According to the county attorney's statements on May 21st, 2024, before this commission, should this matter be denied, leading to the applicant suing the county, the applicant would lose in a court of law. Summary of factors, unfavorable 1, 2, 6, 7, 8, 10, and 11. Highly unfavorable 3 and 5. Double highly unfavorable 9. Four unknown. Urban-like development in a rural area, which is not compatible. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the ability to speak on this issue. I'm a resident of Spanish Cove. I reside at 288 Forest Law of a Circle, and I'm here today to request that you please deny Z2440 for the following reasons. Spanish Cove and Baldwin County infrastructure, the roads and drainage just are not there to add another 60 to 80 homes. Increased traffic in the Lillian and Alberta area on Highway 98 and then in and out of Spanish Cove, as she said, Ridgewood Drive is already three-and-a-half minutes from that, and you're going to have a lot more traffic through a very heavily lived-in area with kids and that kind of stuff. Increased stress on the Alberta schools, and again, increased traffic by school buses in the Cove. The Alberta schools are already busted at the seams, Alberta Elementary, and that's just going to add more people to that infrastructure that is just not there yet. The sewer system, the smell inside and outside of the Cove and the dumping into Perdido Bay, and then damage to the wetlands in the area and the Perdido Bay marine environment. County residents, including many of my voting neighbors, are aware of the explosive growth. As I said, we have a petition with almost 300 signatures, and there would be a lot more signatures, but we are not allowed in our community to go door-to-door and ask. So I just want to ask you, at this rate, it's just going to be a matter of time and money before the Lillian and Alberta area is going to be overbuilt. Please deny Z2440 and resolve the problems with the infrastructure, the present infrastructure, the roads, the schools, before adding more homes in this area. Thank you.
Ms. Robyn, can I ask you something?
Yes.
What did you say about you couldn't go door-to-door?
We are not allowed to go door-to-door in Spanish Cove. It's against our covenants.
Okay.
To ask, to actually poll people and see how they feel.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Andrea Andrews?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, my name is Andrea Andrews. I've been here 26 years. I do not live in the Cove. I live on 91, okay? I have seven acres, and I moved here because I love the rural. But there is one thing that Ms. Liz brought about that nobody was thinking of. When Spanish Cove was first built, this is from a friend of mine that does live in the Cove. Her father was the, one of the original builders of the Cove. She told me, now it's hearsay, but it's been brought up already, when they, the reason why this piece of property does not have any division is because originally it was supposed to be a pool, a rec area, a field house, you know, a community center for that side of Spanish Cove. That is why it is not divided or subdivided, and it was forgotten about. It is not supposed to be housing. They have promised these people pools, another pool, another clubhouse, a place for their kids to play, a place to picnic. Well, they're getting rid of it. They are totally forgot about it. But I'm talking 26 years ago, this was brought up by somebody that knows. I couldn't bring her with me because she's severely handicapped, but she could tell you. She lives on Rosington Circle, and she's been there almost as long as the Cove has been open. Now, they're greedy. They just want the money. They don't want to do what was promised to the original citizens and the original settlers into that area. And I live on the septic system. I live on 91, which is Crowsfly, and south of the Cove. I smell their septic when it runs over. When I left this morning, I was smelling it, and it had just basically started raining, so I know it's going to really stink when I get home. And we're talking quite a bit of miles away. You keep, that system is not set up for as many people as they have, and then they lying to their people saying that they were going to build this, and now there's not, there's not many people that were there originally that remember this. A small few, but that's what was promised to these people, to Spanish Cove, because that pool across the street is too small for what they have now. And they have obscene rules. Kids can't play, basically. This pool was supposed to be bigger. The clubhouse was supposed to be bigger. They were supposed to have a playground for the kids, which they really don't have in the other one. The other side doesn't have that.
Can you?
They have it on the bay, but they just put that in a couple of years ago because I used to go with my friends and picnic on the bay, and they didn't have anything then.
Yes, ma'am. Well, your time's up, so.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was trying to get done fast.
I gave you a few more seconds.
But gentlemen, I hope you decide to deny it. Thank you.
No, thank you. Is it Lainey Cameron?
Lonnie. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Lonnie Cameron, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I live in Lillian, Alabama, and I live in Spanish Cove. In the spring of 2022, I went to two community meetings, one in Alberta and another in Robertsdale. And the purpose of these meetings was to gather feedback from Baldwin County citizens about the needs and wants for future growth in Baldwin County. As the four of you know, well, there's three of you today, as the three of you know, there were numerous meetings just like the one I attended throughout Baldwin County. And from these meetings, as well as online surveys, the Baldwin County master plan was developed and approved by this commission. Personally, I was very excited that the commission adopted this plan and the input of the citizens of Baldwin County was utilized in developing this plan. Good job. Thank you so much. Last month, for a second time, the Planning Commission voted to deny this rezoning request by Hamm Enterprises, saying this zoning request is not compatible with the Baldwin County master plan, which to my understanding from the meeting I attended, is supposed to be the guide to development in Baldwin County. I hope that each of you will follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission. It is my understanding that your denial of this request would not stop Hamm Enterprises from building houses on this property, but that they would not be allowed to build as many houses as they are requesting and would have to follow the District 33 RA zoning requirements. So my question is, what's wrong with that? It seems to me that denying this request is the best solution for Lillian. Everyone I've talked to in Lillian is against this rezoning request. You can see many of these people in this room. I hope you will honor the request of those of us who live in Lillian and really the request of all the citizens in Baldwin County who supported and continue to support the Baldwin County master plan. I also have a little, a letter from someone else that they asked me to read. They couldn't be here because they work. Is that okay?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Hello, my name is Erin Funk. I have lived in the Lillian area for many years. I am a father of three in my late 40s and work full-time. My wife is a mother of two and a first responder RN who works by Pensacola Airport. We fully support the efforts of Tracy Gamble and others involved in the Rural Character Lillian Group and the Keep Lillian Country Group. And while we would love to voice our support in person at county planning meetings, we are both unable to because of our work responsibilities. Spare you my longer rant about how unfairly skewed this is to tax-paying, hard-working homeowners like myself that are totally unable to attend meetings during the work week. Tracy and I felt that a short letter with signatures from people like my wife and I could be read at the meeting to demonstrate that for every retired adult able to attend meetings in person, there are many, many more who care just as passionately about keeping Lillian's growth pace to what we, the longtime, full-time residents of the community, want, who are grossly underrepresented, are totally, totally unrepresented, represented at county planning meetings. As a relevant side note, I am an IT director and CTO with decades of experience in the tech sector, and there is zero technical reason the meetings couldn't be broadcast and interactive. Baldwin County just doesn't seem to view that as a priority, but if they did, and we would, could eliminate the drive time, we might be able to attend important meetings remotely. But until that changes, if it ever changes, it's a moot topic. By adding my name to the list below, I'm sharing my voice. By adding my name to the list below, I'm sharing my voice with others so that Baldwin County Commissioners and planners can see and hear that those of us, where it's nearly impossible for us to abandon our business day duties to attend a meeting in person. My name also indicates alliance and alignment with Tracy's overarching group message to minimize development and density and keep Lillie in the way we, its hard-working residents, want it. Sincerely, Erin Funk and Jennifer K. Wade of Lillian, Alabama.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dan Church?
Dan Church, 2199 Clubhouse Drive, Lillian. I'm also a member of the Board of Spanish Cove, but I'm not speaking as a board member. The Board, the current Board has not even discussed this. We have no, not taking a position at this point in time. But a previous Board, many, many years ago, when conditions were entirely different from what they are now, did approve this as a part of Spanish Cove. Current Board has not taken a position. I'm in a quandary. Our covenants make it rather difficult for us to get involved, and we have not chosen to do so. We don't control the zoning, and we, we can't change it. We can't approve it. And we really don't believe, personally, I don't want to stick my nose in your business. If you want us to, ask us to, and we will, but we'd rather not be involved. It's, you know, it's just someplace we don't need to be. I think personally, I would be happy to have the zoning changed if we knew what it was going to involve for the Cove. If this were limited to maybe 30 or 40 stick-built units, I probably wouldn't object. But we don't know. This could be 100 mobile homes, and we might object. We do have some limits on what capacity we can absorb. That's just my opinion, and that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Mr. Fred Lugwick? Did I pronounce that right?
I'm not sure I know how to operate this. Okay. Yeah, I think so. Yes. And I, and to move on, just click this. Okay, very good. Thank you. My name's Fred Lurwig. I'm adjoining a property owner on the west side of the 23-acre subject property, and I oppose the rezoning of the 23 acres from RA to RSF-3. Do you know which button to page? Okay. The subject property is a watershed property, and it's critical for the draining of water from the land west extending to County Road 91. The USGS shows that there's a 25-foot drop in elevation from County Road 91 to this subject property. There's 160 acres of stormwater flows down two natural waterways that go through the 23 acres of this property. Rezoning the 23 acres for development will destroy this natural waterway and cause flooding downstream and adjoining properties. Studies show the stormwater runoff from developed property is four times greater than from forest land. Keeping the subject property forest land reduces the runoff, serves as a buffer for erosion control, helps prevent washouts on County Road 99 and Antietam Road, helps protect the environment, the wetlands, and Perdido Bay. A US Geological Survey map clearly shows wetland on the subject property. Rezoning the subject property from RA to RSF-3 will adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Furthermore, as a property owner, I will not provide access to the subject property voluntarily.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Mr. David Schuman? Did I pronounce Schuman? Schumer?
Sorry?
It's all right. My handwriting is bad, too, so it's all right. I can't read my writing sometimes.
I'm David Schumer. I'm an engineer representing the applicant for this project, and I just had a couple of points that we've made at the previous meetings. We had this before as RSF-4 to match the size of the lots in Spanish Fort, and we came back with RSF-3 to match the zoning in Spanish Fort. This is... I apologize. Thank you. Spanish Cove. I have another project in Spanish Fort that's on my mind. But in Spanish Cove, this is a legal lot of Spanish Cove that was sold by the development of Spanish Cove. That doesn't have any restrictions or reservations to require any kind of amenity improvements beyond what the Baldwin County subdivision regulations would require. This is a zoning request, and so we're just requesting a zoning change. Any infrastructure improvements, whether it's sewer, or drainage, or traffic, would have to meet all the requirements set forth in Baldwin County's regulations. And so we're not really discussing that right now. This, the one X, watch my time, the one X that we had on the county's analytical, unbiased, you know, view for the points that they have, which is a really good way to go about it, is that there were no changes since zoning was implemented in this property. Our opinion is, as part of Spanish Cove, it was originally zoned incorrectly. It should have been zoned in line with the rest of Spanish Cove, so that it should have been in the RSF-3 or RSF-4 to match the current development that it was part of. It is a legal lot of Spanish Cove. It is not an adjacent property of Spanish Cove. It is a legal lot of Spanish Cove. So that should, that is, a rezoning is, this is the error in the original zoning designation. It should be RSF-3 or RSF-4 to match when it was originally brought in for zoning. And so that would have been, that X would be a checkmark had it been done at that time. But I can answer any other questions that you have also while I have another 45 seconds.
I don't have any for you. Thank you. There is a David S.H.U.M.A.N. in here. I was making sure that I didn't... There was another David, so...
Thank you. That is very embarrassing. That wasn't the first time. Thank you, Commissioners. Anyway, David Schuman, I live White Ospe Drive in Lillian. And I just want the Commissioners to think about one thing here as a taxpayer, me and the rest of us. This isn't the first time. This isn't the second time. This isn't the third time, but this is the fourth time that you guys are listening to a lot of the same arguments on our tax dollars. And the way I see it is, there is something that is not resolved within Spanish Cove community, their bylaws, their covenants. Why are we taking our tax dollars and our time when they can't settle their own business? Why is it our business? It needs to be their business first before it comes here. That's how I see it. So I would like to just sort of cut to the chase, and I really think that this should be denied. It shouldn't go any further until it is resolved within their community. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Jeff Wyndham?
Morning, Commissioners. I'm speaking on behalf of a group as Ham Enterprises, our employees, and our stakeholders. If I could have five minutes?
Okay.
I have some photos for you guys. These are the two entrances to our property from Ridgewood Drive, and you will see that they are stubbed out for development. I live, our office is in Robertsdale. We also have an office in Silver Hill, and I live in Fairhope. Regarding the districting, this parcel should not be in this situation. We should not be here right now. I'm paraphrasing Jay Dixon's statements from the Planning and Zoning Commission presentation, where he correctly stated that this parcel is not in Planning District 33, but it's in 23. Our parcel's inclusion in District 23 is made clear by the ordinance that was adopted in 2003. Ham still pays dues to Spanish Cove today under that ordinance. In our preliminary meeting on this project, staff pulled up different layers of the zoning map and informed us for the first time that the map had this parcel in District 33. We were shocked. Further indication of the incorrect mapping is that this parcel connects to the Spanish Cove Perdido Pines by those two roads that you see. They are not cul-de-sacs. They dead end into that parcel for future development. All right, so why is this important? District 23, Spanish Cove, a high-density residential development. I know people are talking about the Master Plan, and they're saying that, well, it doesn't have high density there. It does have medium density, and the rest of Spanish Cove, which is RSF-4 through 6, the Master Plan says that should be RA. Does that mean we should bulldoze Spanish Cove and make it RA? Of course not. Of course not. Perdido Pines section that we're in in Spanish Cove has densities from RSF-3 to RSF-6, and that's a non-conforming RSF-3, which means you go and measure it, it's actually RSF-4. We originally asked for RSF-4, and then Commissioner Gruber, I hope I don't misquote you here, but at our meeting the last time, you had made the suggestion or the comment that could the commission grant RSF-3, and the county attorney said no because we had applied for RSF-4. We went back and we looked, and we said, can we do RSF-3 with our engineer? We decided, yes, we could. I have seen several people say that that would be 60 homes, 60 houses. It would not. We, our engineers looked at it and sees that it would be about 45, give or take a few, not 60, 45, okay? All right, so let's contrast District 23 with 33. Because our parcel was incorrectly mapped in 33, it had RA zoning forced upon it in 2006. All right, most of us weren't in our positions in 2006, but it should have been designated at least RSF-3, and we wouldn't be here today. RSF-3, like our sister parcels in Spanish Cove, some of which are RSF-6. So, second point. Staff's report looked at the zoning factors, and in our, in our first request for RSF-4, they cited six of the 10 in favor. This time, they have seven of the 10 in favor, with only one not in favor. And that's an unbiased look by, by the staff. So we're, we're getting more factors in favor on this request. Also, in our RSF-4 request, a Planning and Zoning Board member asked why Ham didn't request RSF-3 to be in line with what is, even though it's non-conforming, is on Ridgewood Drive, but we have done that now. All right, my third point is, this is the last piece of Spanish Cove, so this thought about, well, where does the development end? It ends here. There's not another, there's not another lot in Spanish Cove. There's, no one else can build. This is not a new subdivision. For the last 50 years, if you went to public records, anyone went to public records, they could see that this was for future development of Spanish Cove, okay? It is on the Master Plan. Last thing that I want to mention, I've been in over 20 rezoning subdivision cases. I have, to their credit, I've never seen a group as organized as the opposition. But most of them are Planning District 33, not 23, which we are in. Their group, their Keep It Country group has bused people in today. We would have loved to bust people in and support. I've talked to a half dozen people. Six.
Hey, just hang on, hang on, hang on. We understand. Go ahead, finish.
Talked to a half dozen people, asked them to sign, and again, we can't go door-to-door either and get signatures, asked them to sign in support. They said they were in support, but they feared retribution from these guys that are in opposition. It's been on Facebook. It's been on social media. I've actually been a target of some of it, unfortunately. But today, we ask you for RSF-3, and please understand, we could not go door-to-door and get signatures. They have a group that already has hundreds of people. They can just get them to sign and hand it to you.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I gave you a few more seconds, too, just like I did the other person. Ms. Connie Gowan?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment for this group that's in here? We've been real, the way y'all have been acting. Nobody booed you when you came up here and gave your speech. And to do that to a man that just came up here and pled his case, just like y'all have two sides to the story, it's no right to boo anybody in this room. And I'll kindly ask our chairman to keep a better grip on this. We usually don't even allow the clapping, the Senate Planning and Zoning Meeting, like you have in Robertsdale, where it's totally mismanaged. There's not supposed to be outbursts, applause, and that kind of stuff during our meetings. We act civil in here. We, we hear your voices, and we understand your concerns. We have the decision to make. Booing applicants that come up here, the speaking is not, is not professional, in my opinion, and Commissioner Gruber, this has been a chairman before, too. This just isn't right. Commissioner McKenzie's doing a great job today. It's the first time of having all these things in front of him, and I commend him for that. But there's got to be some stoppage of these outbursts. I don't care about the clapping, but booing applicants that come up here, it's not fair when none of y'all had got booed when you came up here. So just, just respect the process here. This is a process, and I'll, and I'll restate the process. This is a rezoning case. This has nothing to do with the subdivision. They're asking for rezoning. All these factors that y'all are bringing up are great factors that would come up in the subdivision process, not today, because we don't know what they're going to do. So just with that, just, I'm asking again for respect for everyone in the room, the people who are denying, that want us to deny this case, and the people who are for the case. Can, is that okay? Yes, sir.
I'd like to see you put your phone down instead of texting whoever you're texting or playing games on your phone when you should be paying attention.
Well, since I'm paying attention, and you don't understand my life and have no idea what I, what could be going on, on my phone, so...
I just think it's rude in this situation.
Okay. Yes, sir. I take that in consideration. I appreciate your comment. I opened myself up for it, so that's what I'm up here for, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ball. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Connie Gowan. I do live in Spanish Cove. I have neighbors that I know very well that live where the exit and entrance is going to be, since this other gentleman denied the access on, onto the other roads around the area. And it is going to be a problem. It used to be a nice, quiet area. I'm afraid it's getting worse and worse, and it's going to get worse. Okay, now, another point. The Commissioners are for the people, correct? And I know it's zoning and all that, but I hear all of these adverse comments about the development, planning development, and I agree. I don't want it there. But I haven't heard anything positive about it. What's, what's it going to do for all of us to have all these new houses there? I don't, I don't know, you know? And so not only that, we're talking about you for the people, but this is only one person that the planning would be benefit to. That's all I got to say.
Well, thank you for your time. Thank you for speaking. All right, Mr. David Williams. Sorry I put you last, but you spoke once before, so I'll come on up and speak. Sorry I put you last, but you spoke once before, so come on up and speak.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you.
And I just want to make sure we're talking zoning, so compatibility is a main factor, correct? Yes? Okay, because I understand the infrastructure, and I don't want to go there. So, on compatibility, when you look at RA, and you look at RSF 3, and you look at our master plan, where does this come together? With over 4,100 linear feet of the perimeter of this parcel, 600 feet touch Spanish Cove. 3,500 feet does not. At all borders, RA property. So, with that compatibility? No. I heard from the one gentleman that said this should have been zoned, but it wasn't. Well, it's, you got to deal with the facts. This is what it is zoned as, you know? I could say it should have been zoned RSFE, but it's not. It's zoned RA. And that's what we're dealing with here today. The other gentleman says, we build this and it ends here. Well, that's until the next applicant comes in and says, hey, we're connecting to this property, that we're RA, but we're not connecting to an RS3, so now that's compatible, right? So, I don't think we can keep building on that. I think we got to deal with the facts. Lillian population is 1,946. Because Spanish Cove cannot go door-to-door, and we want to gather people's input, we hold a town hall in September on a Saturday at 2:00 PM, as a side note, during college And we have about 200 people show up, 10% of the population, on a Saturday, show up. Out of all those people, I heard zero that was in support of this. And I live in the community. I hear the comments from the business owners, everybody, the citizens, yet to hear somebody in support of this property. Have you heard, you as the Commissioners, because you receive correspondence and everything else, have you heard from anybody that supports this, other than the applicant or their associates? No. So, that's why I think, and like Mr. Schuman said, this is the fourth time where before you, you've seen the amount of research, the amount of time people have taken to speak their piece and say, this is not compatible with our area. It's not compatible in the master plan of area. So, I respectfully request to all of you to vote in denial for this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Look, there was, anybody else that didn't sign up that wants to speak on this, on the Ham property? Alright, sir, come on up first, and then I'll get you, ma'am, next.
You did go off sheet.
You did? I missed it, sorry. That's the reason we ask at the end.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Bobby Beck. I'm the president of the Property Owners Association of Spanish Cove. It's a subdivision that the 23-acre parcel we are discussing today has been a part of since December 18, 1973. We're a covenant-restricted community established in 1974 with four separate and diverse divisions from recreational vehicle to bayside lots. Why that is, I don't know. I was 10 years old when those decisions were made. Many areas in Spanish Cove are 40 to 50 years old, right alongside our new construction in Spanish Oaks that contains the latest construction, infrastructure, and stormwater protection systems and standards. As elected director and chair of Spanish Cove, I'm speaking on behalf of our board of directors and 1,750 properties. Mr. Chairman, may I have five minutes?
Chair, go ahead.
Mr. Jeff Wyndham, President/CEO of Ham Holdings, he approached Spanish Cove in June of 2021 with an initial plan to build approximately 80 homes under the original RSF 4 request. That plan met all Spanish Cove covenant requirements for development in our Perdido Pine section. The opposition today will tell you that Spanish Cove's infrastructure is crumbling as a reason to vote against this rezoning request. Although some of our stormwater systems and roads are 40 to 50 years old, they are not crumbling. We budget and maintain an asset repair and replacement fund that today totals 1.2 million to maintain and repair our drainage systems, roads, amenities, and infrastructure. In addition, our latest construction, which ended this year, we have, three detention ponds were added to our new development as required by Baldwin County. That serves 169 homes on our north end. Spanish Cove maintains 17 miles of private roads. In our covenants, it is a requirement that our roads meet county road standards. Spanish Cove's roadways will easily support the additional automobiles and construction vehicles. Pollution to Perdido Bay was cited in the Planning and Zoning Commission's denial recommendation. The issue of sewage from the Spanish Cove sewer plant seems to be the number-one complaint. Spanish Cove does not own, operate, maintain the sewer plant located inside of Spanish Cove. It is owned and operated by Baldwin County Sewer Service. This company not only serves Spanish Cove, but many neighborhoods around us in Lillian, along County Road 99. There is a Baldwin County Sewer Service lift station located at the intersection of Spanish Cove Drive South and County Road 99. Yes, it stinks there sometimes. It is vented, to prevent the buildup of methane gas, which is common in sewer systems. The main point here is that it's never been, we have never been told that this sewer plant is causing any contamination into Perdido Bay. One of our highest priorities for the last two years has been the Western Perdido Bay Watershed Management Plan. Spanish Cove is a founding member of this important steering committee with two members. To date, Spanish Cove has received no information from this committee or Baldwin County environmental water testing programs in case pollution from Spanish Cove is going into Perdido Bay. Perdido Bay is Spanish Cove's number-one resource, and we remain committed to supporting all efforts of the Western Perdido Bay Watershed Project Goals for Water Access, Shorelines, Heritage and Culture, Fish and Wildlife, Environmental and Water Quality Goals. Gentleman came up here and said we didn't have a handle on our covenants and bylaws. We have a section called 801. It's called permitted use, lots may be used for only the purpose set forth on the recorded plats and shall be subject to recorded restrictions applicable to the lots on said plats. The December 18, 1973 plaque clearly states that Lot 3268 is in Spanish Cove, Planning District 23, and is approved for future development. This is our last, what's called a bulk property. Bulk property owners are granted rights to subdivide the properties they own. Also, in our covenants, Exhibit A, Recitals, Paragraph D, states simultaneously with the execution and delivery of this agreement, Spanish Cove is also conveying by separate instrument certain other real property in the subdivision, the bulk property to Lillian Land Company. They are, that is a bulk owner, which terms shall also deem to include the context may require all the signees and transferees of Lillian Land Company. Lillian Land Company sold this property to Saltwater Land Company in 1994. Saltwater Land Company sold this property to Mr. Quipman Ham, Ham Enterprises in 1997. The bulk property rights stated in our covenants transferred from Lillian Land Company to Saltwater Land Company to Mr. Ham and Ham Enterprises. In conclusion, Spanish Cove recently completed 169 new homes in our Spanish Oaks section that has attracted many new families to both Lillian and Baldwin County, including our new military families from Cory Station and Naval Air Station Pensacola, that have found an exceptional county to call home, very affordable housing, low assessment rates, and amenities that are arguably the best in the Lillian area. These new homes in Spanish Cove did not cause crumbling infrastructure. They didn't cause traffic jams. They are not polluting Perdido Bay, and they have not affected any farmer or rural area in Lillian. Thank you for the time.
That's, thank you. There was a lady that raised her with the hat on. Can you come up? You wanted to speak?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Lilly, and my husband, John Brettz, we spoke to Mr. Gruber several times about flooding already on our property. We built a house in Spanish Oaks about 18 months ago, and every time it rains, half of our backyard is flooded, because all the other houses around us are above our house. The issues are, there's really bad traffic. I used to be part of Lillian Fire Rescue. It took us forever to get to some of these houses in the Cove because of the distance already and the traffic trying to get out of, onto 99, from my house to get to the fire station, to get a fire truck to take it to a home, and I was on the medical staff. So, I'm just saying, there's so much time and so much delay already because of the traffic that's already on 99 coming out of the Cove. It takes forever for the buses to come in and out, and I'm leaving at the same time to go to work as a nurse, that those buses are coming in and out. I disagree with the fact that there's not flooding issues or not drainage issues already, because as I said, we already have pictures within a few weeks of us moving into our brand-new house where water's all the way up, almost to our back porch. And we've addressed this with Mr. Gruber and Baldwin Sewer, my husband and I both. And adding more homes in that area is just not compatible with what, keeping rural, and that's why we moved to Lillian, is for the ruralness of living here, and not because necessarily because of the amenities. But I would like to see that property used for its initial designation for pools and clubhouse is on our side, because it's really hard. I have to drive almost a mile from my house over to the clubhouse is over on the bayside to take my kids swimming. That property was initially deemed for clubhouse is pools, parks, playgrounds, and we are part of the new development, the new military families that are moving in. I just think we should deny, deny this again. This is like the fourth or fifth time that this has come before y'all, and it needs to go down permanently.
Thank you. The lady with the woman that's come to speak. If y'all have got some more information that you want to add, because we could go all day with this, and we respect y'all for speaking, but if you've got something that you want to add to it, I don't want to keep going on and on. We've heard the case so far, and I think we need to wrap it up, maybe one more speaker, if you like, and that's it, okay?
Okay, I just wanted to speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
He's what addressed the Western Perdido Bay Watershed Association. I'm actually treasurer. In fact, Skip, we started with you in 2022, and we got all that together. And what Mr. Beck had talked about was that there were two people on the steering committee. Well, the steering committee is no longer, that's gone. We, that's, and there was, were two people from the board on the steering committee. One of them was myself, I used to be on that board, and the second person was the operations manager, who dropped out after I resigned from the board. So, we have continued on. And so, for him to say that we haven't given them any information, we do publish information in the Lillian paper every month. And it's pretty, most of the people in Lillian know that AIDM has been, because we publish about our water testing. And so, most of the people in Lillian already know that AIDM is testing Peterson Branch based on our volunteer water testers found high levels in Peterson Branch. So, AIDM has been testing there. We don't have their results yet, but they have been testing there. So, and I will tell you that Baldwin County Sewer, because of our efforts, is, has been paying more attention to that lift station. Because before that, when it was raining, nothing would happen, and they did have overflows. Now, they are, like she said, putting trucks there, because they know that they're being monitored. So, I just wanted to correct that. And the other thing, when the gentleman from the Ham Enterprises spoke, at the Planning Commission meeting, I believe they said 55 homes. Now, today, he said 45 homes to you today. And I would also counter that. In 2003, when that was zoned, 21 years ago, when it was zoned RA, when I read the ordinances, it talks about how they sent, everybody in that area was able to vote. So, I would have thought the owner of that property would have gotten a ballot to vote and would have known about the zoning. So, honestly, for them to come today and say it's a mistake, that mistake should have been looked at a long time ago when all this was going on. Thank you.
Thank you. One more. Come on, sir.
Ronald Rayvan, County Road 99. All I got to say is, they say it has been in Spanish Cove for all these years, yet they've been paying RA taxes on it for a long time. And you wonder why that the, if not the Spanish Cove taxes were zoned the other way, would it not be more substantial than the property zoned RA? So, I don't think that it's agreeable that they are paying taxes on RA when the, also maintain that the property is in Spanish Cove. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Do I have a motion on the?
I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Staff, on this, you know, with RSF 3, is that compatible with what Spanish Cove itself is right now, as far as it's going? I mean, that's mostly what Spanish Cove is, right? So, it would be compatible to Spanish Cove, would it not?
Yes, sir. There's adjacent properties that are zoned RSF 3.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve our staff's recommendation and approve the rezoning request.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? The only thing that I want to say is this has came back up, you know, we did hear this several months ago, and it was a 2-2 split, and it just, it kind of died. This is a tough situation, I know that. I respect y'all for coming here and speaking. I really do. And so, I just, and I, on the behalf of the, I want to speak on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I want to say they are volunteers. It is tough for them when they make a decision, because they live in the communities. But I think they do a great job. I know there's some times that, maybe they feel like they're not, but they are doing a great job. And I do respect what their decision is. But I do have a motion and a second. There's no more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. So, it passed. So, if y'all want to leave, just leave quietly, and we can finish on with our meeting. We've got another few cases. I'm going to wait just a minute, get started.
Yeah.
Jed, we need to hear E S 1 first, or does it matter?
Yep. Go in order.
Go in order. But we can't make a motion on all three, can we? If y'all not here with the other cases, just ease on out quietly, please, we can get started.
I just want to see his response.
Can you? Oh, okay. Alright. Thank you all. Ms. Cory?
Alright.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Case Z 2418, the Binkston property. The request is to rezone 21 acres from RA to RSF 3 for residential development. The property is located in Planning District 12. It's located north of County Road 54 and west of Highway 59 in the Robertsdale area. The current use of the property is agricultural. The applicant is Duane Smith, and the owner is Bill Binkston Jr., and they would like to rezone to RSF 3 for residential use. Here's the location of the property within the county. Here's the locator map and the site map. The adjacent zonings to the north and to the west are RSF 3, and used as agricultural. And then to the south and east, we see RA zoning with agricultural land use. Here are the factors that staff reviews in any rezone request. As you can see, about half of the factors have been met. There are a few factors that are questionable, and then one factor that has not been met. For this particular case, staff's recommendation is approval. The Planning Commission recommended denial- The planning commission recommended denial due to traffic, drainage, wetlands, flooding, and noncompliance with the master plan. I'm gonna move over to the next couple of cases. This is case Z2428, the Childress property, and PRD 2405, the Cambridge subdivision. This is a rezone request and a planned residential development approval for a 445-site residential development. The subject property is located at the intersection of County Road 54 and County Road 55 in the Robertsdale area. Their proposed use is a 445-unit planned residential development. The zonings of these properties is RA and B3, and they would like to rezone to RSF2. The smallest lot size is 6,614 square feet. The density is 3.06 lots per acre. The amount of open space proposed is 33.828 acres, and of that, about 31 acres would be usable open space. In terms of a traffic study, it is not required for a PRD, but it will be required for preliminary plat, approval. A scoping meeting regarding the traffic study has been conducted with staff and the developer. Here are the factors for the rezone. Staff believes that the majority of the factors have been met, or a little over half, and some of these are questionable. In terms of the PRD, here's the locator map and the site map highlighting the subject properties. Here are the details of the PRD. Here's the site data table and examples of proposed homes within the PRD. The landscaping plan showing 40-foot landscape buffers when adjacent to agricultural land use. We also see 10-foot landscape buffers along classified roads, the availability letters, the subdivision narrative, the proposed amenities, which include a multipurpose sports field, walking trails, a playground, park area, pickleball courts, a fishing pier, and a kayak launch. Other staff comments in terms of the wetlands, they do have a permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to fill any jurisdictional wetlands that cross any proposed streets. There is a pond to the southeast of the property. This would assist in reasonable detention, and there's a latoral shelf that would mimic wetlands. So in terms of the rezone, from RA and B3 to RSF2, staff's recommendation is approval. With the PRD, staff's recommendation is approval with the conditions outlined below. In terms of the planning commission, the planning commission recommended denial of both the rezone and the PRD due to safety, stormwater management, traffic, and inconsistencies with the master plan. And I do want to mention one thing, you guys have received a letter regarding a potential cell tower that was supposed to be on this property. We have received no application or anything in regards to a cell tower. If they were to come with an application, the PRD would have to be heard again. This would, this is not affecting any of what's being heard today.
Thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Commissioners?
I don't have any questions.
The only question that I have, can you go back to the one screen, sorry, the sketch where it's got all the lots right there?
This one here, or this one here?
Go to that other one, there's a better looking one.
The PRD detail?
Little close up. That, that one will work.
Okay.
On the very north, it's, I can follow the road where the, it looks like a retention pond. So that, that's just, they just put that in there. In other words, we only have an entrance, two entrances for this property, correct?
Yes, sir.
On 55 and 50?
And 54.
54. So these are just in case of future developments?
I believe so, yes, sir.
To the east and to the north?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. So 400 and something lots with two entrances?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. I just wanted to make sure I didn't, I figured, I didn't think there was a subdivision north or anything?
Yes, sir.
Where they can exit. So thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything? All right. I'd open up the public hearing. We have several speakers on this. Mr. Tim Mullik?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, is, all those, all the speakers here, are y'all speaking on behalf of all three of the cases going on at one time? Are y'all gonna come, you know what I'm saying? Just checking.
Yeah.
Because I think we're gonna probably tackle them separately, aren't we, Jay?
Yeah, I think we could hold the public hearing at one time for all the comments, but don't have to be three different actions.
Okay. Just making sure.
Yeah, thank you for asking.
For a point of clarification, this is not a hearing about a motion, correct?
This is just a rezoning case of the property.
Ah, just a clarification. Okay. It's currently zoned rural agriculture? There's farmland to the west, which is RA. There's farmland to the east, which is RA, and we own the field to the north, and that's RA. So if you want to keep with the landscape, it should stay RA. Doesn't mean they can't build a house on it, they just got a little bit different set of guidelines. Also, if you're gonna fit with the master plan, this does not fit the master plan. I have a question. How can staff make an approval that does not fit with the surroundings?
I can, I can, Jay can answer that, or I can answer that?
So, and we go through this most planning commission meetings, but you know, there's the 10 criteria that are, the zoning ordinance requires us to review rezoning applications by. So there are, there are several different things. The master plan is just one of them. And there's a lot of, as we just saw, there's, there's inconsistencies in the, in the current uses in the master plan and, and the zoning in the master plan. So when you look at all the factors together, whether, you know, where it's proximity to light zoning nearby, development patterns, the master plan being one of them, when you evaluate all these things together, we have to, to kind of put all those pieces together to, to make the most comprehensive review of how it's meeting those 10 criteria also. Does it mean that it has to meet every single one of them? Because some of them are very vague, and they're, you know, subjective. So this, rezonings are much like a, like, you know, where you just kind of plead your subjective review of it, and when we review these things, we look through all those requirements as the zoning ordinance says, and make our recommendations based on how compatible it is with those 10 requirements, not that it has to meet every single one of them.
This case is very, very simple. If you stick to the basics, it's a clear denial. No emotion at all, because it's RA and it's surrounded by RA. To do anything other than deny, I cannot believe staff came up with that. That's nuts. They didn't do their job, and for y'all to approve that you didn't do your job, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Mr. Chairman, if I could clarify, this property is zoned, is surrounded by RSF3, and the corner piece has some B3 on it as well, so it's got a lot of similar uses around it.
It's about far more footage of RA than it is RSF.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tim. Stephen Moore and Ms. Moore? Y'all want to come up?
I'm Rabina Moore, and this is my husband, Stephen.
Yes, sir.
And we've lived on that property about 30 years. The property at 23870 County Road 55, it's just north of 54, has been in my family for almost 100 years. The property, our property adjoins the development that they're proposing on two sides, on the east side and the south side. We enjoy our quality of life there, but in recent years, traffic has gotten crazy. The other day, it took me two minutes to get out of my driveway, and at least four minutes to get down to the four-way stop. Four-way stop has three corners that are farmland, and the one side, I think they were questioning is the businesses, the gas station. And the traffic going through there, especially in the mornings, from all directions, has just gotten crazy. I've been saying for over a year, we needed a traffic light, and with a proposed 445-lot development, that's gonna just increase, you know, just so much. I just, I just don't see it. I mean, you're proposing, or they're proposing, putting essentially a small town, dropping it right in our neighborhood. We're talking about 445 lots, figure about two people per home, if that, on average, that's about 900 people. Talking about vehicles. Everybody has a vehicle, so at least two cars per household. We're talking about pets. I mean, just, I mean, it sounds nice and everything, but this is our neighborhood. This is where we grew up. This is where we live. And there's subdivisions popping up all over the place. It's time somebody put their foot down and say no. And my husband's gonna address the traffic issue.
All right, thank you.
Well, the traffic is very bad. We have to go across the street for our postal, and it literally takes several minutes to wait for the traffic to clear, go over, wait again to come back. What I really want to do with the last part of this, and hopefully I don't run over. We live, the land there, from the gas station to our property, sort of slowly slopes down, and, but slowly. And then our property is here semi-level, but we live on about 36 acres of land. Of that, we live mostly in a section of about eight, eight acres. The area that had been farmed before, you can't walk out there during rain. You certainly can't drive out there. Water, the ground gets saturated very quickly. And it continues down to an area that is wetlands. And I think, remember them saying that part of this is on wetland, but it's been approved? I, I just think I heard that. But I'm concerned. We do not have flooding in our house right now. We have a basement, because it's an older house. Has never flooded. Land, because our property is a little bit stouter, a little bit more firm than most of the places around it, water will stand a little bit, but it goes fairly quickly. Concern is, if they're building up here, and they're, whatever they do up here, is it gonna cause water to start building up into a stream that is there through about the one-third, the north one-third side of our, our property? Is it gonna start backing up? And if it does, it'll back up onto our property, it may affect our house, and it could affect the property on the backside of us. That's it, thank you.
No, thank you. Thank both of you. Mr. George Walters?
My name is George Walters, and I live at 15601 North Boulevard in Silver Hill. I'm about a mile south of where this development is. Also, I want you to know that I am also on the Planning and Zoning Committee. Be concerned, the traffic and the stormwater runoff. And I just wanted to throw some numbers at you that I was fortunate to pull off of Google yesterday afternoon, just out of curiosity. Baldwin County gets in excess of 60 inches of rain per year. Most of that rain is from central Baldwin County south. One inch of rain in an afternoon on one acre of land equates out to 27,154 gallons of water. If you figure that up over 152 acres, you're looking at over 4 million gallons of water. Now think about this morning, how much did it rain this morning? Have we had an inch? Have we had two inches of rain today? Now, I know they're gonna put in storm drains and all that, move the water off that property, but it's gonna go somewhere else. It's not gonna be their problem. It's gonna be my problem. It's gonna be somebody else's problem. They're gonna shift the responsibility somewhere else, whether it goes to Perrone Creek, or whether it goes to Fish River. But you look at that 4 million gallons of water going over 152 acres, you don't, you have to add in the 445 rooftops, the 445 driveways, the 16,000 or however many feet of asphalt that they're gonna put in their subdivision, the sidewalks, the whole, everything that's gonna take away from the drain, you know, for the, for the natural drain of that water. Yes, it floods. I've walked that land, and it floods. It had flood on it, water on it last week. But what's gonna happen to all that water? Where it's going, whose problem is it gonna become? It's not gonna be the developers' problems. It's gonna be the citizens' problems that live around that area. And I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
I'm gonna have to take a just a break. Sorry, I've drank too much water up here, or we're gonna have a mess. So I just want, I'm gonna close the public hearing just for a second, recess, give me just a few minutes, and I'll be, we'll start back in five minutes. Question. I didn't have to close the public hearing a few minutes ago before I left, but we're still, the public meeting is still open. Mr. Stephen Bumfree, you want to come speak, please?
Well, good morning, commissioners. You know me as chairman of the planning commission, but I'm not here as chairman of the planning commission. I'm here, I have, my address is 16601 County Road 52. I'm in, have property in District 14, but more importantly, I'm from the Silver Hill area. And I'm speaking more from that, because I believe this project is just not right for this area. Being on the planning commission, we have to approve a lot of things in unzoned areas that we just don't agree with, but we're stuck with the subdivision regulations, and you know we're going through changes in that. So we're stuck with approving these 60-foot wide lots. And by the way, I'm not just here because this is in my backyard. It's not in my backyard, literally, but I have made it very clear from being on the planning commission that I'm opposed to what I feel like is a real problem with sprawl in our county. When I call it sprawl, it's not, it's not expanding its sprawl. When we start putting 60-foot, these 300 or 400 lot subdivisions out in rural areas, it's just not right. We can't do it, we can't do anything about it when it's unzoned areas, but we have the opportunity here not to allow this. And this problem exists because of the R3 portion of property that was there in 2006 when this district came into being. How it was zoned that way, it was before you guys, before I was ever on the plan, I don't know. It exists, we have to acknowledge it. I realize that. But see what's happening? We're having an, now, a developer come in and building on that, wanting to expand. When we expand this one, guess what the next property owner's going to do? He's going to want to pick up and expand it from there. So where does it end? There's, there's just, this is just not compatible for the area. This, folks are going to speak to, to traffic and drainage. I get it, that's going to be dealt with under the subdivision. But if you don't create the problem, then you don't have to solve the problem. And that's where we're at today. If we approve this, then we create the problem. He's going to have to solve the problem. We're not going to like the answer to the problem. It'll probably be turn lanes, traffic lights, and who knows what else. So I say stop it at this point, and just not have it. He can develop his R3 property, let him develop it at 10,000 square feet, 80-foot wide lots, and, and he's going to have a massive drainage problem there, so he's not going to get as many lots, which, to me, is better in the long run. But this massive subdivision just does not fit in this area. I've talked with staff about this before. They've shot me down when we've been over next to Highway 59, because that seems to make, I get that. Well, we're not there on this one. This is in a rural area. It does not belong here. And I, I say this is an opportunity for us to do something about it. So I hope you will consider that, and, and just realize, this, I'm going to go to Commissioner Gruber over there, who said in the meeting I was at just a while back here, you know, people come here for a reason. They like things about Baldwin County. We keep doing this, this is not what they're coming for. So why don't we do some real planning here and try to do something about this situation? We have the opportunity to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Terry Whiteside.
Terry. Did you pull that map back up that shows the subdivision layout that, that you brought attention to all of that? Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. I'm sorry to be a problem.
No, you're not a problem.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. Please forgive me.
No, you're all right.
So basically, there's two ways to look at things. Improving things and taking things. Now, James Chapter, James Chapter 1 brings us a whole lot of information about what we see about what we say and what we do. Well, I think what like best, what we got, what Paul shares about, that we have to continue to transform to be something greater. And when we look at being something greater, we got to think, if what we're adding, is it value-added or non-value-added? We got to ask those questions. Is what we have before us here value-added? We're all going to be accountable someday for everything we do and everything we allow, whether we believe that's going to happen. And so what we see before us here, I will bring up three points of what we see before us here, is the, the stormwater runoff, which we heard a great example about. The crime rate, which we have not heard about. And about traffic, which we're going to hear more about that even more so in a minute. So clearly, in the Silver Hill area, we receive, clearly, we heard 60 while ago, it's actually 66-plus, because I collect this stuff. With the changing environmental conditions, and we're all going, because of the changing of times that's happening, the torrential rainfall has increased. Today was a great example of that. If you'll notice here, and I live across the road from all, or across the field from this, you'll notice these pictures right here. This, this actually goes through side of my yard. So we heard some great information about septic tanks while ago. If this neighborhood goes in, with the pond is way over there up to the north, with two ways out, my septic tank is not just going to be running over, my septic tank's going to be floating over to Oakley Drive to everybody else. And so there's no way that this stuff can be controlled like this, unless we do something even better, and it's build a levee around the entire thing to keep water from getting out. But I feel sorry for everybody that buys it inside of it. Now, we talk about everything going on there, because the, the water, we heard some great examples, you're going to hear more, about how the absorption rate of the water there. When Wayne comes up and share, he's going to talk about that the floodland there, and how it will not uphold water. If you dig down a little bit in there for a little ways, no matter what time of year, there's going to be more water. It will not hold homes properly. The crime rate, we talked about that for just a minute. So currently today, domestic violence is the number one thing that happens in the Silver Hill area, 20%. It happens there. I'm into ministry field, and I keep up that stuff. So we think about these type of homes that we're shared about. These type of homes, if you go back and really do a lot of research, what kind of people moves in these homes, crime will increase. We talk about the traffic, two ways out, think about the road rage that's going to come from that. Think about the road rage. Traffic concerns on 54, 55, which we're going to hear some passionate conversation about that in a minute. I said the other day, for just a little bit, while I watched at the gas station, that road, traffic was backed up on 54 in both directions further than I can see. And we think about that happening, and I've run out of time, but I can't thank you enough for your time.
I'll give you five more seconds, because I gave her a few other people.
And so, we, we think about this traffic, it's unreal. Road rage is there like crazy today. And, you know, it, it's just, there's no way to really widen the roads there. We look at farm equipment. We have a farmer here with us. Think about him pulling his combine through there. Think about him, especially when it becomes to potato season. And so there's a lot that's at stake here. And I really ask you, when you vote, when you make your decision about this, to consider, what am I accountable for? What someday am I going to have to answer for? As your job as commissioners, you're here because you were voted into office.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I got a question I want to ask him.
Yes, sir.
Because I just want to follow up. I just picked one thing out of everything you said, and, and just want to hone in on it. You know, you said, "We, we don't know what type of people are going to live in these houses." What's that mean?
Great question. I'm glad you asked that. And so, let me start off by saying this. A few, I think it was six weeks ago, there was a, a gang shooting south of Silver Hill. Being, I've lived in that area for almost 30 years now, the type of people that's attracted to homes like this, and we can see that from behind Penn Air Credit Union in Robertsdale. That's a good example of what kind of homes are going to be here. You go through and look at the type of people, and there we see a lot of gang activity, come from activity. Go to the city of Robertsdale, talk to the police department. That's where a lot of violence is coming from today, same type homes. That's the example I'm using. Good question, though. Can I answer you? Okay?
Kind of, but that's okay.
Let me ask you further. How else could I answer you?
You said you was in the ministry field, so I just didn't know, I'm trying to figure, I'm kind of balancing all this act. I don't, I don't know, the average home sales price in this county is, you know, around $350,000 for a new home. I live in a subdivision, I don't know about these guys, and I just never seen much gang activity. And I live in a, in a pretty good part of the county where you would expect stuff like that. So I just didn't, what you, when you said, "We will, we don't know what type of people are going to be moving into those houses," there's not even been a single person moved in those, so I, I just, I don't know how we're associating these houses with gang activity.
Great question. So I'll be direct with you. I'm a jail ministry.
Right.
I do a prison and jail ministry. And I can tell you this, from the Robertsdale, what I see coming into the Robertsdale jail, what I see coming into Daphne Jail, this type of, and knowing where the guys live, knowing what goes on, this is an attraction for stuff like that.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Joyce Kent?
Hi, my name is Joyce Kent. I've got some pictures showing after hurricanes, that whole, on the Binkston property being underwater. I also have a conservation plan of my dad's, and it shows a different, talks about the different soils back there. The Binkston property is on Grady Pond, type of soil, let me take that up there. And that is, the soil is known to hold water and poor drainage. Back in 2006, that property was tried to be developed into Silver Creek subdivision. They failed because of drainage issues. Then the developers filed a lawsuit against us for the easement rights to our ditch to drain their property. That failed too. On October the 8th, 2009, the court gave us judgment for us, that they had no right for our ditch to dig it out to make for their drainage. And that is the judgment that we got. We have lived my whole, we've lived at that property for 40 years now. I live two houses down, at my parents' house, so that property used to belong to my grandfather and his family. It had always been farmed, and it has no business being developed because of the soil and the flooding issues there.
You done?
Thank you for your time. I wanted to talk mainly about the pictures we gave you, about the water out there. I've heard it said that that property has a drainage problem. It doesn't have a drainage problem. It is the drainage for the 500 acres around it. All that water flows into that property. Where you see the pictures taken from is about five acres away from where the property in question is, and that's about six foot higher than that property. So during the time of those pictures in the middle of that property, and that's out there where it's already zoned at, is about this deep in water, across the whole property. Now, if you look at those pictures, and one of them, the crop on the left-hand side is brown, and another one, the crop on the left-hand side is green. Those pictures were taken at two different separate times. The one where it's green is the older picture, because there's a cypress tree at the back of it, and I remember the cypress tree there. And in the other picture, it's, in the smaller pictures, it's gone, because that was years later. This property floods frequently. And I've seen it on four separate occasions, worse than that, where it was, I couldn't even get to there to take pictures. And it had backed all the way up, and if you look where the, about where the open it is on 54, it would back all the way up there and cross 54. So.
Thank you all, Mr. Wayne. Thank you all. Here's y'all's pictures.
Yes, thank you.
We need to let that out. Yes, please. I don't want you to lose. Thank you all for speaking.
Thank you.
No, thank you all. Thank you all for being here. Mr. Donnie Dearborn?
Well, I was hoping to be last, but I will come in here. As you stated, my name is Donnie Dearborn. I'm a third-generation Baldwin Countyan. I'm 63 years old, and I live in the central part of Baldwin County all of my entire life. The proposed property that you were looking to change from RA, rural agricultural, to allow residential, goes completely against the master plan of 2006. The reason this master plan was drawn up, keeping it rural agricultural, is they knew due to the problems of the area, and the, of the roadways, the property flooding and all, that it would not sustain development as far as homes. If you decide to go ahead and approve the rezoning from RA to a residential, which will open up the ability for them to build a 445-unit subdivision, it is going to cause undue harm to all the adjacent property owners and to the community of Silver Hill, Alabama, and the residing community, due to the unobtainable traffic flow. You have two small county roads that this property is going to be adjacent to. If you put 445 houses, you're looking at adding another approximately 1,000 cars a day coming in and out of that subdivision twice a day. We cannot handle the traffic we currently have. How do you think two little county roads are going to handle that? I mean, that makes no sense whatsoever. Whoever comes up with these ideas just blows my mind. Drainage, you're going to hear tons of drainage. This water floods all, the, the property floods all the time, every time it rains. You mentioned one, one person mentioned, County Road 54 actually floods from the runoff from this property. And this property is there to maintain floodwater. Can you imagine what's going to happen if you develop property that is currently taking in the floodwater? Where's it going to divert it? It's going to cause undue harm to the people around it. This is an unjust subdivision and an unjust approval if you go ahead and approve this property for rezoning. That's all I've got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Shannon Biggs?
Hi, can you hear me? Sorry. My name is Shannon Biggs. I'm the newest landowner. My address is 23764 County Road 55. I bought three acres, I had to buy three acres. We only wanted one or two, but we had to buy three because it's zoned rural agricultural. With that being said, we went through the process, and we got our deed, and the ink wasn't even dry on it when this new sign went up and said there was going to be a 455 subdivision, house subdivision in our, in our backyard. So that being said, you think 455 people, and there's two people in the house, maybe 900, but then they have two kids, that's 1,800 people you want to put on 150 acres, which is the size of Silver Hill on 150 acres. Now, I bought three acres because it's zoned rural agricultural, so why can't these people all buy three acres? We could have 50 really nice houses. Or maybe we can have them buy two acres, and that'd be 75 really nice houses. Or maybe we can have them buy two acres, and that'd be 75 really nice houses. Or maybe, if they all bought an acre, there'd be 150 really nice houses. And those houses would be underwater. Today, today, my, my three acres right there with the really nice solar-powered entrance, and we have a really nice fence, and we have really nice stuff, but I can't drive out there today, and I won't be able to drive out there tomorrow because my ditch is completely full of water right now, and my solar fence is underwater, and my driveway's underwater, and we don't have a development out there yet. We don't have utilities, we don't have, we don't have electricity, and we don't have our power, our sewer and all that yet because we don't know how we're going to do because our three acres is underwater. So, and when it dries out, maybe Friday, we'll be able to go out there, and maybe on Saturday, we'll be able to have a little picnic, and then on Sunday, we'll pack our stuff up, and then we'll go back where we live. You know, we're trying to, we're trying to make that our residence, but I don't know. If this 455-lot subdivision at 60-foot lots is going to be approved, then maybe I'll be in front of you again to rezone my three acres so that I can have 455 storage units for them to use. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Duane Smith?
My big, my first rezoning cases. Thank you all, I appreciate this.
Well, you've got more coming next time.
I know, I've got more coming next time.
Yeah, we try to keep it interesting. Duane Smith, anchor engineering, representing CAD Properties. Basically, as the staff mentioned, about 65% of this property currently is RSF3. There's about a 20, 23-acre portion by the same owner that's RA, and it's kind of an orphaned piece. And then you have the Childers piece, that is about 40 acres that's currently zoned RA. The master plan actually calls for moderate density in this area for all of these parcels. So, this really isn't off of the master plan. The, this area does have flooding conditions. We've run a watershed drainage analysis in this area, and the problem is too much water from the watershed is coming for the drainage structures the county has on County Road 54. That's why we've designed these two large lakes. From a drainage analysis to, for a development like this, you would need about three and a half, four acres of lake. We've got laid out and designed in 14 acres worth of lake because we've designed these lakes to handle the watershed, not just this development. And currently, under a 10-year storm, there's roughly, I think it's a 30- or 36-inch pipe that goes under 54. It's kind of hard to see on the plan, a little near where the entrance drive is off 54. That pipe at a currently 10-year storm is over capacity. There's a box culvert to the west on 54. That pipe, that box culvert is over capacity and would flood the road under a 50-year storm. With the lakes that have been designed in this, both of these structures will now be within capacity under 100-year storm. And we will be helping the county's infrastructure from a drainage standpoint. The, this subdivision's been laid out, working with staff. A lot of the new subregs that we've all been through and discussed, and is currently going through the process, it incorporates many of those subreg improvements that they're looking for in subdivisions with the common areas, with laying it out so there's more green space for residents to be able to use. And lastly, I would just say, look, the size of lot doesn't indicate quality of subdivision. Bringing in these green spaces, these things, amenities for subdivision residents to be able to use, size doesn't mean the quality of a person that's going to be in there. It's all about making sure you keep your subdivision up. These will have covenants, they'll have restrictions. And quite frankly, everyone, not everyone can afford a one-acre or three-acre lot. We have to be able to serve everyone.
Thank you. Elizabeth Wheeler?
All right, good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Elizabeth Wheeler. I live in between 104 and 54. This will directly impact my driving and, you know, my lifestyle, things like that. I did not grow up in this area, but through family and military moves from one side of the country to another, I have watched many areas be overdeveloped and destroyed, and have seen very few benefit from these developments. I was very lucky to meet my husband, whose family has lived in Baldwin County for generations. We have the fourth in our household right now. And after our military tours, we were lucky to be able to bring our children home to our family to be raised in Baldwin County. As someone who has actively looked to purchase large land, over 100 acres, after, before and after COVID, I watched the land and the cost of the homes artificially be inflated, making property reasonably unobtainable quickly become out of reach for the non-corporate citizen. We are, we are a farming community, and that is blessed with a Gulf and bays and historic communities with mixed with business areas, which until recently commingled in harmony. It has been our own slice of paradise, and that paradise is quickly giving way to overcrowding and traffic. We have made the land unaffordable for current farmers, let alone future farmers. And that is not, and that is not compatible with the way folk want to live in Baldwin County. The traffic will become unbearable. I used to be able to brag that the only traffic I had to deal with was a combine crossing from farm to farm, and that is quickly becoming far from the truth. This unending increase in cheaply-built cookie-cutter homes will not only reduce the appeal that we all love in this county, but more importantly, will eventually crash the housing market. We have had, year over year, a significant decrease in home sales in Baldwin County, yet we keep introducing new developments. Since the job recovery from COVID in 2022, the unemployment is steadily increasing, increasing and decreasing home sales. As the housing cost increases, we start pushing households to have both parents working. Where will they work? Meaningless jobs created to increase the infrastructure to support the increase in housing. It is a vicious cycle that our children will pay the price for. Once we make these decisions, there is no taking them back. Once the farms leave, they will not come back. As it was so eloquently expressed earlier, the reason for living here, the reason, we live here for a reason. If you take that away, people won't want to live here. They won't buy these houses that you are approving. This will crash the housing market that anyone has enjoyed and exploited over the past few years, increasing drugs and crime, as you asked earlier. We understand this. The gentleman stated that the size of a lot does not, does not dictate the person who lives here. That is absolutely incorrect, and he knows it, but he's going to state it anyway. It absolutely does. And when we crash the market, these housing prices will go down, and that's when crime enters. It happens everywhere across this country. I have seen it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Ms. Catherine, do you want to speak now with this rezoning case? I think you said to go last, but I'd rather you do it. It's about subdivisions, so I'd rather hold off if you don't mind.
Sure, I'll do it afterwards.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else before I close the public hearing on this case?
I do have one question.
Come on up here real quick.
I just have a question. You know the snippet?
I don't know.
The snippet of one of those properties that has an RS3, which is a residential, C3PO, whatever it is. There's one of them that already has an RS3, which means it's residential. How did we get to that one? How did that one get an RS3 snuck in there with RA? We can't seem to find the trail. Was that some backdoor cash?
No, ma'am, that's not how it works.
We have to find out how the trail is. We'd like to have that.
There's no backdoor dealings. Our staff will tell you right here.
When this planned district was initially zoned, it was zoned RSF3 with the initial zoning.
What year was that?
It's been a while, like 2000.
He can get back with you on that. He can call you.
We're talking about the trail, how that one snippet opened the door. That was RS3, and now they're trying to call out. They can find the trail of that one.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Hang on just a second.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, the lady in the back, you're going to speak on, what are you speaking on behalf of?
Actually, these subjects.
So, yes, ma'am, it's time for you.
You want her to go ahead and do it?
Yes, you come on up and speak now.
Is there somebody else that's wanting? I can't see you behind them. Come on up here, and then I'll get her. Because I want to get about this case first.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask this one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because now, now there's only one more signed up to speak. I promise you that we understand traffic's a problem, drainage is a problem, flooding is a problem, and quality of life's an issue. We understand all that. So, if it's about draining, traffic, property values, and we, I promise you, we get that message loud and clear.
So, I can't speak because you've heard everything.
No, sir, no, sir, I'm not saying that.
No, no, I want you to speak.
They say you couldn't speak. Because he made, he made the comment at the last public hearing, these are, you're not signed up to speak. So, he's going to allow you to speak, and if, and if you're adding good stuff to the, to the thing, nobody's denying you the right to speak. I'm just trying. No, sir, the words did not come out of my mouth that I'm denying you the right to speak. I was clarifying what this chairman said at the last planning and zoning hearing we had. But you can, you can do that, that's fine.
No, come on back up here, sir. I want you to speak because I wanted you to have the fair.
Did I say not to speak? Absolutely, I did.
All right.
I'll voice my opinion at the next election.
Okay.
All right. Ma'am, come on up, if you didn't want to.
Can I just ask a question?
Come on, ma'am, come on.
Well, this lady's.
I know, we need to get, get going because we're.
I just have a question. Are these roads going to be big enough to allow school buses and fire trucks to get in there?
We have nothing to do with that at this time. This is a rezoning only. Now, if it passes, whatever, I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying if it does, it will go further. And that's when the Planning and Zoning Commission will go further with it. I just want to let you be aware of that. This is just a rezoning. Now, come on up, ma'am.
There's a PRD overlay on this, which now the subdivision is laid out, so I would assume the applicant accounted for school buses and stuff.
Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kathy LG. I am a transplant. The reason I'm a transplant is Baldwin County is a wonderful place, not because of the ruralness or anything else. What I love is we take care of each other. You take care of me, I take care of you. We love each other. It's not about money to live here. Okay? What I've seen just around, I live in Silver Hill, and just around us, there's probably like, I don't know, over 1,000 homes. There's no way to get to our schools, just these rural roads, two-lane rural roads. I'm all for people coming here. Go for it. You got to get the infrastructure in place first. You can't do it without the infrastructure. It took me 40 minutes to go from West Silver Hill to 98. 40 minutes. That is unacceptable. So, I think what, and I don't know if you have this power, you need to talk to the highway department and get those people off their butts and get us some infrastructure. We have no four lanes going any way east and west. They're all going south, right? And we have four of them. How many people are you adding here? Silver Hill alone, you're adding thousands and thousands and thousands. So, if there's anything I want to say to you is, if you don't rezone it, then this one we don't have to worry about. It gives us time to talk to the highway department. We've got to get the infrastructure in town. We have to. And let us be Baldwin County that takes care of each other. I remember the one hurricane, when they were killing each other in New Orleans, what were we doing? We helped everybody, didn't we? Let's help each other here in this case, too. I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you. All right. Public hearings closed.
I've got a question for staff. How many units or houses could go on the current RSF3 zone in this in place?
Let me see if I have the.
And what's the minimum lot size requirement?
The minimum lot size for RSF3 is 15,000 square feet.
Which is a, which is a 30-foot wide lot?
60-foot, man.
A 60-foot wide lot?
60-foot, there.
Minimum lot width is, I just, I'm trying to grasp the concept of what the applicant could buy right without coming to any hearing except a subdivision hearing could put in there, just, just for my knowledge. Nobody has figured that out? Is any, hang on, I think the applicant may have an answer for that.
270.
270. All right, that's all.
Those are 80 feet wide.
Those are all 80 feet wide?
On R3 would be 80 feet wide.
Mr. Chairman, I've got, I've got a motion if y'all don't have any more questions.
Well, I got, I just, you know, we're dealing with two different property owners, are we not, on this, for this? Okay.
So, what's the motion? How's the motion need to be made? Brad, do you know?
Do we need to do the Princeton property or the?
The what?
The Binkston property.
Well, you have to do, both.
Well, so far, we've only had the hearing, the public hearing opened for Z20. We did all three?
All three.
Okay. So, I would do a separate, well, unless you think separately.
No, it needs to be separate, but the, the PRD needs to be voted on last because depending on the outcome of the rezoning vote, the PRD may, it was going to change, actually came to.
Y'all ready for motions? Yeah, ready.
All right, so on case number Z24-18, the Binkston property zoning, I recommend denial.
All right, I have a motion.
Okay, second to that motion.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, on case number PRD 24/05, recommend denial since it does not conform with the rezoning request.
I'll second that motion.
All right, got a motion and a second for denial. All in favor, oh, excuse me, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, on case number PRD 24/05, recommend denial since it does not conform with the rezoning request.
I'll second that motion.
All right, got a motion and a second for denial. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. That's taking care of those planning and zoning cases. So, it was denied. All right, other staff recommendations? Hey, can y'all ease out quietly? Thank you. We want to finish up too, like y'all want to leave.
Just to say thank you for your time, and I know it's hard. I know it's hard on y'all, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Roger, we got other staff or anything? No staff? There's no, any public comments? No public comments. Press questions? I don't see any press. Commissioner comments?
I'll let the senior go.
I want to thank the staff for getting this agenda together. It's very time-consuming to get this stuff together. And again, you know, these cases that come before us, you know, we have to look at them very closely. And, you know, we, sometimes we may not agree with the planning commission, and sometimes we might. But, you know, it's a decision that the four of us have to make when it comes to us, and we don't take it lightly. You know, we, I do my homework on it and look at what's, what's compatible, what's not compatible. And I think our master plan may need to be redone and looked at to help alleviate a lot of this stuff. Because I think back in 2006, Baldwin County has changed since 2006 drastically. I know, you know, you try to get a master plan, but sometimes the master plan outgrows itself. And it needs to be looked at and readjusted to meet the challenges that we're facing today. Because, you know, we are. Because, you know, we are a right, property owner's right state, you know, and, and I take that very, very seriously. You know, if you deny somebody a thing, you know, you're, you're messing with their livelihood and everything else. So with that closing, again, thank you, everyone. And please keep our, our men and women in the service, and also our, our first responders in prayers today and throughout the week. And again, I want to thank, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and be safe if you're doing any travels. Thank you.
Mr. Ball?
Kind of leaning on the same thing. Definitely thank you for staff for putting this together. A lot of work goes into this, especially these meetings like this. So we definitely can't do it without you guys. With that being said, the extra time that we allotted off for the holidays, I hope that will be like, after today, go ahead and we start making the public aware that that's what we're going to be doing so nobody's caught off guard. It's trying to get a tag the night before Christmas Eve. So just, just make that aware, or the day before Thanksgiving or whatever, that we're going to be closing down, and the employees deserve those few days. It's not a whole lot, but it's something. And so I'm, I'm happy that we all decided to do that. And like Commissioner Gruber stated, these cases that we heard today are very tough in decisions. And, you know, somebody's going to come out on the good side in their mind, and then somebody's going to come out on the bad side. And the ladies already left that came up and thanked me, and that I would have never expected that she, she would have done that. So it's always good to get some of those comments, not appearing to be the bad guy, just appearing to help, helping our newly sworn-in chairman on these planning and zoning cases. They can get a little bit out of hand. You just got, a chairman takes control of the meeting and did a great job. So, you know, this, like Commissioner Gruber said, it's not easy. I know we're, and we're trying to get out of here so we can go get something to eat. Everybody's stomachs are grilling. So happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Enjoy the time that you have with your family. And I'll pass it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Ball. I appreciate it. And thank y'all for, the commission for allowing the employees to be off. So I just want to say thank you to that. Thanks to the citizens that's out there listening, if they are listening. Happy Thanksgiving. I know we won't see each other until December, but happy Thanksgiving to all the employees. Be safe. Staff, thank y'all for what you do every day, I know. Especially the planning and zoning. Y'all, y'all get a lot of heat. So thank y'all for what y'all do. And admin, staff, thank y'all. And that's all I've got. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
We adjourn.